Oh, was it yours?
Do the swearing in first or the pledge?
I think we'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we will do the swearing in for Lynn Drickel. Melissa? You want her to come out there or is that?
We'll do it up here.
And I'll take pictures.
He's got his hi- pixel camera.
Oh, yes, he has pictures. Mike's taking pictures too.
Okay, so. I, Lynn Drickel, do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Office of City Council.
The duties of the Office of City Council.
In the county of Sibley.
In the county of Sibley.
The state of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
That's it.
That's it?
And then you can sign.
Now it's official.
There's no turning back now.
You're in.
You're ours.
You love doing that.
It's gonna be one of those nights here.
Okay, now I'll call the meeting to order. We're forced, we'll start off with the open public forum. Is there anybody here that wanted to speak? We have two minutes. I don't see anyone. We'll go ahead and establish the agenda. Erin, is there anything you wanted to add?
No.
Rob?
No, sir.
Pete? Julie? Dale?
No, your honor.
Lynn?
No.
And Jenny?
Just that resolution that I handed out to everybody, our 2020-03 approving election judges for the primary presidential election.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Dale Maline.
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Is there any further discussion? Now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on there? Maybe you just wanted to say a little bit about the two resolutions on there.
Um, let's see, Resolution 2020-01 relating to the 2020 construction project. Hennepin Street has only parking on one side of the street currently because it's a very narrow street. The county wants us to reaffirm with this new project that we will continue to be parking on one side of the street because it's such a narrow street. And this resolution affirms, reaffirms what we're already doing. The resolution approving exempt permit for Airharts Mallards. They come in every year, they have a raffle at their Ducks Unlimited banquet. And that is, we have to approve all the gambling licenses, so that's that.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda if everybody's had a chance to look at it. Motion made by Julie.
Second.
Seconded by Dale. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. New business, updated snow plowing policy.
I was going through the league's new policies and they had a snow plowing policy that seemed quite thorough. We had, there's some stuff in there that we didn't address and that we've dealt with. And I thought it would be a good idea to maybe clarify some of those things like replacement of mailboxes, how close we get to mailboxes, sidewalks, boulevards, et cetera, like if people put landscaping in their boulevards. We've always told them, if you put landscaping in your boulevard, we're not gonna cover it. But now it's in writing, you know, so this policy is thorough. I amended what the league had to pertain to what we already had in our practices and policies. And I had Troy and Chris review it. And this is what the three of us kind of came up with to cover everything, so.
Are there any major changes other than something?
No, the streets that we plow stay the same. It's still one inch. You know, the parking restrictions downtown are still in effect. I put in our fire hydrant snow removal policy that we passed last year and just included that in here. It's, really doesn't change anything, it just puts into writing our current practices, so. And then, well, I'll put it on our website. I thought we could put it in with the utility bills. Maybe publish it in the paper so people get a chance to read it, to see that we do have policies pertaining to mailboxes and landscaping and things like that. And so they understand. If there is a complaint, there's also a complaint portion. What, if you have a complaint, the proper steps to go through to file that complaint.
I saw that, good. All right, very well.
And we could replace the ordinance that we have on our books, so then next month I'll have an ordinance to take that out of ours.
So this is like a first reading and then?
Oh, this is just a policy that will pass.
Just the policy, okay.
But the ordinance, yeah, we'll need to read.
All right, okay.
That we'll vote on.
All right, that sounds good. And we are telling her to go ahead and, with this snow policy, no one has a problem with it.
Go for it.
All right, speed trailer donation.
Well, I'll need a motion.
I make a motion.
Motion made by Dale, seconded by?
Second.
By Rob to go ahead with this policy. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, speed trailer.
You wanna take this or you want me to?
Good evening. Sorry, I didn't hear anything officially. Yes, we are very excited. We've had some, a very generous donation offered to the city. I guess since we don't have the checks in hand yet, I'll refrain from specifying. But to assist us in buying a speed trailer, they are quite expensive, average. I got three bids, around $10,000, so certainly a costly piece of equipment. They are nice, mobile, they also provide data as far as speeding times. And we can adjust our, you know, our policing accordingly, so we can move that around town as we need it. So after speaking to Jenny, we also did approach a couple other businesses who were able to find, agree to contribute as well as finding a matching grant. So that will, those funds will, we were told, be available mid-January. I just don't have any checks in hand yet, so I guess that's all I will say until everything comes through. But so far, we are very excited. The, the original party who did offer, the business in town, asked that the city kick in some money. And we do have some Safe and Sober money available that is to be used for specific equipment for Safe and Sober. And I believe this would certainly qualify. Jenny and I talked about $1,000 would be reasonable. So up to, of course, the council.
How many, roughly in donations, how much do you think you're going to need yet? I mean, how much will the?
Nothing, that's just it. We were offered $5,000 by one party and another party said they would, could kick in $2,500. And then approached another company for a matching grant. And like I said, those are hopefully going to be approved. They said that it was a go and the funds would be potentially available. So it was, needless to say, it was very good news because it's very expensive, so.
So what's the story on the old one?
They don't have one.
Oh, the old one? I would have to get the specs. That was bought under Bruce Frelick. We purchased it with Gibbon and, Chief Frelick purchased it with Gibbon and Gaylord. And so I came in 20 years ago? It was quite, it was quite some time ago. I'd have to pull the specs. Okay, yeah, and so that was used, sort of used and abused. And actually, right now, it's being stored at crop production simply because I asked them to store because we ran out of garage space. And I had approached a couple years ago, Tony Padilla, he's been gone now, he's now somewhere else. But in Gaylord, asking, should we put any money into this? And I got unequivocally, no, we don't want to put money into that because it was just so old, it didn't pay.
Or we should get rid of it?
Yeah, it's just being stored.
Stored, yeah.
It's, so, and I have been asked.
We store the new one in the garage then as a plan?
Yes, yep.
I, I'll move approval that we go ahead with the bid that's in front of us and with the matching grants and the $1,000 from the Safe and Sober forfeitures or grants or whatever that is. So I'll move approval to go ahead.
Okay, there's a motion made.
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. The industrial park. What are we doing? I mean, if somebody comes tomorrow and says, how much do you want for this land?
Five million dollars.
What are we going to do?
Five dollars.
They got back to me, the county, and she said that they are, they have, would have it priced at $25,000 an acre.
So. Jeez. Per acre. How many acres we have in the industrial park?
Seven.
Seven. I propose that if somebody comes in and says that they want it, they pay the going rate if they want a TIF. If they don't want a TIF, they get it for a dollar an acre.
TIF or tax, or tax payment?
Yep. If they want to pay their freight, they get it for a dollar. If we gotta pay the freight, they pay going rate.
Are there any stipulations on having to build out there for a certain amount of time?
It's zoned, I, one light, manufacturing.
But we could put covenants on it that they can't buy and hold for resale, they buy and hold.
Well, for a buck an acre, I could see somebody coming in and say, I'll take all seven acres.
Exactly. Yeah, but it has to be, you will build. Yeah, just like we had out there where Dale's at.
Right.
You don't build on it two years, it goes back. 12 months, 18 months, I think.
But we don't have anything like that in rock.
No, there is no, nothing in writing relating to what can and can't.
I agree with Council Edwards that we should. And I think 18 months is a good number. But I think we should specify that it goes back for fees. So there's no, like that last lot we had to get back, we had all the confusion. We just said, well, we'll just do it for flat fee, whatever it costs to actually do the deed and lawyer work. So it's right up front.
Want the covenants, you want covenants on it?
Yes. For, you will build. If we're gonna do, I agree with what Dale's saying, the way we're gonna do it, if they want a tax payment or TIF, then it's 25. If not, it's one, but gotta have those covenants. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd call it a condition.
Yeah, a condition, yeah.
How many, just that one condition?
Has anybody seen anything else we should have on there? I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know. It might do us well if you could find the, what we had out there for the property that. Those couldn't be resold. You had to build on it, you had to stay in it for two years.
I have for, for where you live.
Stick built, which wouldn't apply to this. Which wouldn't apply to that. I wouldn't. I don't know what all different things are, but that's a valid, that's the, that's the first valid point here. You have to build it, you can't resell it. If you don't, it goes back. Does that include the assessments on that, that $25,000? There are no assessments. There, that was paid for by the first two tenants, basically. So anybody following, doesn't get any? Because if you start putting on, you have to do this builder or that builder. You know, and we don't want to. You tend to drive. We don't want to pick winners and businesses out.
So there's not going to be any stipulations on what type of business? I mean, it can't be?
It'll have to fall under the zoning.
They have to fall under zoning, yep.
Okay, light manufacturing.
Yeah, because like you couldn't put a hotel out there.
Right, or storage.
Well, you couldn't because of the noise. Under Minnesota noise classification area, you can't put a hotel in an industrial area. And you're butting up against one, so you can't do it.
And I don't think you could potentially rezone that piece along the highway as highway commercial, which would allow for storage. But I don't think you'd want to, that's a prime lot there.
I wouldn't, no. If anybody ever came in and wanted to put commercial there, then yeah, we definitely could look at doing a conditional use on that. But at this point, I'd leave it all industrial, what it is.
But you want covenant, you have to build in 18 months, was that what I heard?
Yes. I think the term was.
And then I'll look through the covenants that are out there.
Covenant, but. Conditions. Conditions, yeah.
Condition and.
Conditions, yes.
Conditions. And I, my advice on this now is, these are general terms. This would need to come back to council for the specifics because the devil can be in the details sometimes. And I've seen this before, recently in fact, where it was left too vague in the purchase agreement. And that's important because then.
Yeah.
I mean, if I needed two acres to put something, why would I not take all seven?
But you would have, then, well, that's.
I'm gonna build my business.
That's another thing too then, I mean, is, so I see what you're saying, then is there a stipulation? Footprint stipulation. Yeah, but you're still gonna pay taxes on that, that seven acres, so I don't, I mean. True. Yeah.
You're at $25,000 an acre.
Yeah. So that, so the TIF will be based on the 25?
The TIF will be based on how much they're gonna improve the land.
Also, the lots that have the frontage that has the access to 19.
There won't be any more access to that.
Well, the payment would be a taxable value of the improved. As I say, that one's worth a lot more with that access.
And that's if it will not re, allow us to reuse that access.
That's quick for me to hear, you know, to get that decision. I just want to make sure we're clear in what we're talking about.
You need to put something together for next month and then you guys have a month to think about it and.
Yeah.
I would like to know too what other cities have. Other, other industrial lots.
Gaylord and Arlington, they sold all their lots, they don't have any more.
Do you have any experience, Erin, with any cities that have something like this, that maybe we can beg, borrow, and steal our policy?
Well, I'm not even thinking so much policy, but if, you know, Gibbon has comparable lots for $10,000 an acre. And ours are at $25,000. I have anything.
Fairfax doesn't have anything.
Why would you even want the TIF if you can get it for a buck an acre?
Depending on what type of business they're putting in, they're better off taking the TIF. It's on their business. It's their decision on that, which would, is gonna make more sense for them financially, so.
Okay, all right, so.
I'll put some stuff together. If you guys think of anything you want me to add, let me know and I'll.
Does Nuol have any industrial lots?
They do. I can see what Nuol has.
Not saying we need to follow our policy, but there might be some ideas on there that we're not thinking of.
I'll check with Nuol.
And that's what I meant, is.
Okay.
Then we put them in front of Erin, he can point out the pitfalls.
All right, well, we'll, we'll leave it like that for now then.
I will bring something back for next month.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Rob.
Oh, council pay. I was gonna say, is there nothing else?
Are you pushing this again, Kelly?
I'm not pushing it, I'm just saying, you know, take a look at the numbers here. We, we are falling behind, way behind, as far as council pay. You people put in a lot of time. And I think you're never gonna get paid for the amount of time that you put in. But it's nice to get a little something.
It is.
At the end of the year for the sacrifices that you do make.
I thought about it and I know this is always, you know, there's always gonna be somebody who says, well, you should just be doing it as a volunteer thing. And I guess you can legitimately make that argument. I don't think you can legitimately make it. You know, if you think about it, if you volunteer for a church committee, it meets when people are, it's convenient for them. So it's usually in the evening when people are done with work. And many of their council meetings are in the evening. But how many other committee meetings do we have during the day when it's convenient for all the city staff to be here, which makes a whole lot more sense? If, I sometimes wonder if we are only, these seats only appeal to people who have the time or the financial means to be here. You know, I had this discussion with my brother-in-law who's on the school board in Owatonna a couple years ago. And they were trying to get more people to run for school board. And he said, there was this woman who was fantastic, she was involved in committees and she would have been just a great asset. They met a lot. And she said, I'm a single parent, I can't do it. I can't take time off work, I can't afford to pay for childcare. And if you look at, I averaged mine out, I counted up about how much time I spent in the last year. I went back through my emails and, you know, calendar. I averaged at least 10 hours a month. And I didn't include EDA and I didn't include the joint powers board, which I'm on because of, because I sit here. That's a lot, that's a lot of hours. And if I had to, thank goodness I don't anymore, if I had to pay for childcare for all those hours, the check I get at the end of the year doesn't begin to cover that. And I don't think anybody's getting rich, but nor should they. But is it reasonable to at least cover the expenses or, or just the value of your time here? You know, you bring a lot of expertise to this. And do you really want someone, is it in the city's best interest and the taxpayer's best interest to have someone breeze in and not having looked at a budget? Because I don't want to invest the time, I'm like, you know, it's not worth my time to spend hours and hours and hours to look over the budget. And then try and go through it and say, yep, this is the best thing for the city? No, I think it might be worth it for everybody if there was a little more value on the, what we do put into this.
I think it's a big responsibility for all of you. You're making big decisions that affect everyone in town here. Sometimes it's a liability if you're not.
That going in.
Yeah, true. And I would also like to say, I know that the mayor puts in a lot more time than any of the rest of us. So if, if nothing else, I think the mayor.
No, no, I would not take anything.
I would, I understand where you're coming from. She is right. Because you do put in more time than the rest of us on the, due to the nature of the duties. And I don't think anybody in town would have a problem, because you get the same as we get.
No.
As he gets a little bit more. Slightly, yeah. It ain't much. Slightly, no, I agree. I mean, it should be, if we were to move forward with this, it would definitely be as mayor, as mayor, you're, you're always on. Right. I'm not, as a council member, I have that ability, but, I mean, we do, we do talk to people. And Julie, you go back and look at your hours, and I'm sure those are, those are times that you were at a meeting. It wasn't sometime you were stopped on the corner or on the telephone or. And we're not complaining about those things. Because again, Dale, you said. Part of the job. We knew this going in. But, and we're not looking to get rich, but a little something to make up for the difference of time away and definitely to make it, to bring it more in line with some of these others. I don't see going to, what is, Arlington and Gaylord are $4,000 for a council member. I couldn't, I couldn't take that.
Here's my fancy plot.
Oh, okay.
You look at population and cities.
Yep.
And assuming that city staff sort of matches population, you know, I would assume a city of 2,500 has more city staff than a city of 400. But, I mean, Winthrop's over here, population and everything wise, but we're, our council is paid the same or less than Gibbon.
For, for cities half our size.
Yeah, a third our size.
Third our size. So, yeah, I.
You know, police department, we have the electrical department, we have a lot of things that not all the other cities have.
And look at what you're getting with such a council member, I mean, look at their power point. That's great.
And I think the important part to say too, the reason we're discussing this now is because we want to make sure you discuss something about council pay and about, we would be voting on our own pay. So that's gonna be something that's in an election year. And it should be.
It has to be done.
Because we have to be held accountable, and we know we're held accountable. But I don't think anyone that would see these numbers that Jenny put together in polling surrounding cities of smaller to larger sizes would complain that if we changed our salaries at some. We're not talking about making a half million dollars a year. Kelly already does.
Except for financially, no.
Uh, but no, I mean, it definitely, I would, I would see a modest bump for us. And, but for the mayor, I would definitely ask for quite a bit more because again, as mayor, and I know, Mayor, you're gonna say no, and I appreciate that. But as mayor, you're, you're on all the time. You are. So, and I know this is, what, just informational, only discussions.
What constitutes, how do I know when I'm at a special meeting? I know we always say it's a special meeting.
When we call a special.
Anything other than your Monday night.
How many did we have last year?
Depends on what committee, it depends on what committee you were on too.
Well, the committees, the committee meetings do not count.
It's when we have special meetings.
We have less than half a dozen.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, we had three or, two or three last year.
What is that?
$20 per person. And currently, the council's at 1,000, mayor's at 12, I believe that's.
12,000? Wow, you really. Oh, never mind, I take back what I said.
I think there is something to be, you know, there's, there's some value in the possibility that it might get someone else to think about running. I mean, there's a wealth of experience sitting here, myself probably not included. But there are other people in the community that, there's, there's a large cross-sections community that is not represented here. You know, there's, there's rarely been somebody younger than me sitting here, and I am not. I don't count on the young end of the demographic anymore. So I think that it's just easy to lose sight of the fact that we can all donate time. And, and I can, you know, I can go to a meeting at nine o'clock in the morning or one o'clock in the afternoon if I flex my work schedule around that. Not everybody has that ability. And, you know, should they be able to be compensated for their time if they have to take off from a paid position? They probably should.
And by raising that would compensate for that.
Yeah, it would, it would help.
When does a decision have to be made? Just before the election or, or is there a certain amount of time? You'd have to have it.
I don't think there's a time limit, it just has to be done.
Discuss it in the election year. And then, of course, it'd have to be in the budget to be passed, so.
Well, it wouldn't go into effect until next year, whatever.
Right, so I'm saying, it would be in this fall's budget that we, that we pass in December, we finalize in December. But, you know, another thing about that too, about, you know, having the wherewithal and some time. But, you know, we're, we're dealing with financial decisions that affect 15, 1400 and some people. A $1.6 million budget, we've got two and a half to $3 million in the bank and enterprise funds and different things like that for capital improvements. We're always dealing with water, sewer, and electrical issues. We've got a great city staff that helps us with all that. But push comes to shove, we have to make those decisions. And I think with pay, you're gonna get those informed individuals or at least, and other individuals that want to become informed.
Committed.
And committed to properly coming to understand how to make these decisions. And, and always keeping in mind that it's, it's what's right for Winthrop at the end of the day. It's not about us, it's not about so-and-so on one side of the street or the other. So, and part of that is, is just basic general compensation.
And a little bit of it is a value, you know, do you, do you value the, the effort that they did put in as mayor or councilman?
Or council.
And, you know, it, it has to come up, that this has not been addressed since 1997. Well, actually, 95 was when the last resolution was passed. That is a long time ago.
Okay, so you have, we're.
Okay.
20, 25 years.
If we're gonna pass a resolution before the election, probably June, we'd have to, would be the latest. We have the first reading in June, the second reading in July, and it would be official before the August primary. I mean, obviously, we don't vote on council people till November, but when do they have to have their name in in order to be on the ballot?
Like July.
Middle of July, isn't it?
It starts July, usually the last date of file is primary day. So two weeks before that.
Ah, okay.
Well, it'd be interesting if you put this out in the paper, which Mike will, will get the feed on the street.
And I think it should be.
How much we're valued as council.
Well, I, it is important. And until you've ever served here, sometimes it's hard to understand that. When I was mayor 20 years ago, it was nothing like it is today. I mean, it, there's just so much more, so much more. Those employees, I.
Did you walk to the city hall uphill both ways in snow?
I did, when I was, yeah, back then.
Done before 1:00 AM now, that's a benefit.
Talk about pay, it should have been higher than.
Right, you're paid by the hour.
All right, if we have nothing else to discuss on that. Yeah, we added the other thing to the consent agenda. Let's look at, Jenny, your report.
Oh, we finally sold the lot at 203 South Renville. Oh, I gotta get Erin that paperwork. So that's done, I just gotta get it recorded. Troy and I had a conference call with ISG regarding the wastewater reuse project, and things are going slowly, but going. We need to get them some additional information regarding well pumping and some other things. We're hosting a Christmas lighting recycling program. There's a recycling bin in our back door that people can come and drop off Christmas lights and extension cords that will be picked up by Gaylord Sanitation, Tri-County Solid Waste is sponsoring that. Troy and I met with James Monroe with MMUA to discuss getting some more supervised hours for he and Chris. I think we did now get him booked for a couple days in March. He'll be here in February, and that will help them be able to do more things on their own sooner. Chapman should be here the end of January to switch out the three-phase meters. I think they're working on getting the commercial water meters installed. We had a request from a resident to put in an outdoor wood burning stove. I talked to Darren about it. He said that some of the cities he's worked with have prohibited people from installing them due to smoke being a nuisance to neighbors and wood piles.
That's generally what happens.
Yeah, do you, do you guys have any thoughts on that?
Don't we have one on the book?
No, we don't. But do you want me to look into something or should we, no?
What's an asthmatic? No.
Do we have to have something? Do we have to have something?
No, we don't.
Just stop it from coming in, or?
If you want us to prevent them, yes, you would have to have something.
There's nothing that says...
Well, then we need some type of policy.
Or then we, we need something that states that...
Brother's got one, he lives out in the country, and I asked him about it today, and, you know, I said, what would you think about him in town?
Not in town, no.
I can certainly, I know New Ulm has a, has a policy.
Most cities do.
Okay, I will get New Ulms and see that. And that's it for December. For administrator, it was a pretty quiet month. EDA, I spent 15 hours on EDA-related tasks, most of that time was spent on bookkeeping and paperwork. Randy Pegenkoff loan is done, I have to get that paperwork to Erin as well to finish recording that. I'm still waiting on PMO, he gives me a message every few days that Sherry's coming and then she, they don't, so I'll just hang on to it. We have four loans currently out, Walton Law Group, Wenton Market, Backdoor Hairstyling, Randy Pegenkoff, all are current, and we have three business grand openings coming up this month, hopefully, and more coming on later this month. And when I know about those, I will pass those on to you guys, so.
Right.
That is all.
Is one of those the market, though?
Yes.
Was that on Facebook already, I think, or 20?
I haven't seen it, but that's...
No, I saw something, it was like 24?
Twenty-fifth, twenty-something like that, twenty-something.
I thought it was the 20th.
Somewhere around there, yeah. I saw it somewhere, I can't remember where now.
EDA.
EDA, I sent out it.
We were trying to figure out EDA, we didn't...
Was that when it was?
I think it was.
Okay.
Cause I saw it somewhere.
Oops, hope it didn't announce it. I don't think it's a secret, it's already open, so.
Eric, do you have anything, or?
Nope.
Okay. Troy?
Jenny pretty much said everything I had to say with the water meters and electric meters and the district department.
All right.
Sorry, Demi, still...
Under the electric department, Pete, was there anything you want to talk about with the meeting?
Just that, we had our meeting, the, it, there's a lot of concern over load growth. Our load growth is 0.02 percent. We're one of the people who have got a load growth, believe it or not, which is, but I was just thinking that maybe we could buy some new Christmas light fixtures to increase the load.
I'll be honest with you, I do hear...
I was very unhappy with the Christmas decorations, I thought some of them looked kind of ginsy, but I don't know when the last time we put bought any, and it seemed like they weren't all up either, there was, I don't know.
I've heard comments about that.
Everything that we had in working was up.
Working. How many were not working, I mean, about?
There's not much down there that doesn't work anymore, but the stuff that doesn't work, it's pretty much non-repairable. We're keeping it for parts for some of those other ones.
We can put money in the budget next, we have a little bit of money for Christmas lights, but $2,000 isn't very...
No.
You could dig them out of the recycle barrel that you have.
Right. When people turn them in.
Fix them, yeah.
Yeah, maybe take them and wrap them around the street like posts or something. Our, our, I...
You might have more than that, I don't know off the top of my head what happened to the Christmas lighting.
All you money-gurus, this probably means more to you than us, but Fitch upgraded our, our...
Credit rating?
Credit rating from A-plus to stable, which, I don't know what that means, but they said it was positive anyway, so.
That means good finances, good books.
Discuss renew projects, of which there are some. Our budget increased about 1%, but you know what, we always are lower than 1% a year, so we put a 1% in, and we always come in under bud, or, I shouldn't say, we always have, to this point, come under 1%. So, and we elected our new officers for next year, so.
And your clean energy program.
Oh, yeah, they grew 3.3%.
There you go.
Yeah.
And Winthrop achieved their goal for 2019, so.
Good. Troy, anything for our department?
Nope.
Trucks all start, tires are all pumped up.
Justin Tenix, the new chief.
Oh, yeah?
This one's running, it's supposed to have been by end of December, but I don't know.
Did our windmill get up and running?
Yeah.
It is running.
The blades are up.
Yeah, no, but it was supposed to be done by December, but I don't know.
I don't know if it's running or not.
The blades have not turned.
No.
No?
No, it's still sitting, yeah.
Can we put a motor on it and make them turn?
We just stand underneath and make motor noises.
Is there anything for the ambulance? I don't see anyone here. Is there anything you wanted to add to your police report, or, oh, come on up.
Hi again, it's good news. I wanted to report that we have finally hired an SRO, and I am very excited about it. His name is Andrew Peterson, and he is starting his training tomorrow. So this week will be, he's moving from the Twin Cities area, a young man, first law enforcement job, and just so excited. He is exactly what we need. It's been a very long time coming.